Good evening and welcome to the public hearing dated February 26, 2024. This meeting is in consideration of the Municipal Planning Strategy Amendment application to ensure that the Town of Kenfield planning documents comply with the MGA. There is a requirement to set policies on who the town will engage with abutting municipalities. The town was provided with an extension to meet these requirements. This public hearing was scheduled in accordance with the MGA. You will be asked to provide your name and address prior to speaking. You will have five minutes and only one opportunity. You are being recorded and live streamed. We ask that you be respectful of others' opinions and your questions are directed to the moderator. Correspondence received prior to 16:30 on February 26, 2024 has been logged and registered. We had no correspondence on this matter. A public hearing is a requirement for amendment to the land use bylaw as stated in the Municipal Government Act, Part Eight, Section 205. A public hearing allows the public to provide input to council. Council will not be making any decisions at this meeting. We are receiving information from the public to assist us in our decision-making for the second reading after consideration of any submissions made or received at this hearing. Council will have an opportunity to seek clarification from the planner after the presentation. This is your last opportunity to provide submissions to council prior to decision-makings. The public hearing is called a minimum of fourteen days after first reading, and recommendations to council was presented in first reading in this case occurred on January 29th at the council meeting. Only those members of council who are present at this meeting may vote on the matter before this public hearing when it comes before council for second reading this evening. This meeting is called to order. The chair notes that we have quorum, the agenda is fixed as presented, and our planner, Alora Wilkinson from CND Community Design, will walk us through the remainder of the public hearing for amendments. Alora, the floor is yours and the mic is on.
Perfect. All right. Just get this round. All right, just to make sure you all can hear me. My name is Alora Wilkinson and I'm here to present to you for the public hearing the application to amend the municipal planning strategy. So, just to go over a bit of background until we get through the details. So, as was just mentioned, the Town of Kenfield planning documents don't currently comply with the MGA. So, this process was to bring them in line with those requirements. And that specific requirement is that all municipalities are required to engage abutting municipalities. So, those are what the following policy amendments will look to address. To do our work, we reviewed policy of other municipalities, sorry, to give us an understanding of what abutting neighbors in Nova Scotia have done. Two of the really key things for us to consider were the how we were going to deal with shared assets, as well as how we were going to cooperate and how we could articulate that in our MPS, make sure that that was clear. So, our new guiding policies that have been added were really focused on that cooperation component and specifically addressed the municipal service, which is Chapter 11, and our implementation chapter of the MPS, which is Chapter 15. So, again, just a very high-level overview of what municipal planning strategy actually is. And that's the guiding document for how the municipality here wants to grow. What are their aspirations and how do we articulate that? So, the province and other neighbors and the residents all know what to expect for the future moving forward. One of the key pieces of what an MPS looks to do is to address the provincial statements of interest. So, that's something that was already done pretty extensively in the existing municipal planning strategy. But one piece that we really wanted to look at this time was specifically around the protection of water qualities and watersheds in the area. So, that's one piece that you'll see in the new policy recommendations. And then the last piece again that we'll talk about is how we're dealing with some of those neighboring municipalities and how we're going to notify and cooperate around treatment and sewage as well as development applications. So, getting into the details here. After we went through the MGA to make sure that we were looking at all of the components we needed to, there were only five policies that really needed to either be added or tweaked to bring up the MPS into alignment. So, Policy A and B are around the cooperation of those municipal services. C is for protecting water quality explicitly. D talks about updates to the public participation process that you folks have. And then E is a policy that talks about specifically how we're going to cooperate when there's significant changes to planning considered within the town. So, we'll jump into it. Policy A is a new policy and it'll go MS-2 right after the current MS-1 in Chapter 11. And the policy is, as Ren suggested, "Council shall inform the municipality of the County of Kings when improvements and/or major maintenance are planned for the shared water utility owned by the town that extends in the County of Kings." So, again, nothing too crazy in this one. It's just very explicitly talking about how we're going to cooperate and what are our intentions to work together with the County of Kings on the water service. The next proposed policy, B, is amending existing policy. So, it's Policy MS-5, again in Chapter 11. The policy states, "It shall be the intention of council to work cooperatively with municipalities and other levels of government to promote the conservation, protection, and management of groundwater resources." What's added is here following in green, "Through committees and authorities such as Kenfield Water Commission, Kings Regional Sewer Committee, and Valley Regional Solid Waste Resource Management Authority, inter municipal service agreement." So, again, just explicitly stating how we're going to work together. What is that cooperation going to look like? And really being articulate in how we plan to do this work in the MPS. So, by adding the names of these commissions and these committees, it just gives a little bit more clarity on what that process is going to be. Policy C is again amending an existing policy. This one is MS-15 in Chapter 11 again. And it is, "It shall be the intention of council to support and encourage the municipality of the County of Kings to implement planning and land use control provisions that protect the quality of water supply from the Wellfield area and Lake McGee consistent with the recommendations of the Kenfield Water Commission's Source Water Protection Plan and the Source Water Protection Advisory Group Standing Committee of Council, which includes staff from the municipality of Kings County for those lands in the county which are located within the Wellfield area." So, again, the backup water supply for the Town of Kenfield comes from McGee Lake, which is located outside the town's boundaries. But again, because it's an important component to both of the towns, making sure that we articulate how the two are going to work together and cooperate and articulating that shared interest and vision for those two, even though there's those overlapping boundaries. So, again, just a little bit of a tweak to the language just to be as explicit as possible. So, this proposed statement and proposed policy change go kind of hand in hand. So, the first is adding to the existing statement 15.1 under the role of the Municipal Government Act, which is in Chapter 15. So, adding some language and deleting some language. You can see in red what's crossed out will be deleted there. So, that the statement now reads, "The Municipal Government Act is the provincial legislation that governs planning and development in Nova Scotia. It outlines the various methods of development control available to municipalities in Nova Scotia for regulating land use decisions and development within their jurisdiction. The MGA also sets out the process for adopting municipal planning strategies and land use bylaws and the different types of development control, such as development agreements, variances, or site plan approval. The Planning Requirements Regulations, which are outlined in the MGA under Mandatory Content, Section 4D, describe the procedures to be followed when reviewing the municipal planning strategy. It also includes the process requirements for minimum public participation in advertising, which are outlined in the council's G62 Public Participation Policy Planning." So, that statement comes first in the municipal planning strategy. And to bring that in as a specific policy, we've added some policy language, which will come before IM1, so IM1A. And it shall say, "Council shall follow the public participation and advertising requirements outlined in the council's G62 Public Participation Policy Planning." So, again, just specifically articulating what the intention is. And our last policy is a new policy in the implementation chapter, IM17, Chapter 15. And it says, "Council shall notify the municipality of the County of Kings when considering amendments to the municipal planning strategy. This will include sending a copy of the planner's report to their council if an amendment to the municipal planning strategy with a site-specific focus is within 150 meters of a shared boundary. In that case, council shall include a letter requesting feedback to the County of Kings Council and a copy of the planner's report. The engagement with the County of Kings shall be done before the first notice for a public hearing." So, again, it outlines your notification process. It says explicitly how you intend to work with the municipality of the County of Kings when you're going to be considering any future changes to the MPS. And then again, creates a very specific boundary for when, if it's site-related, 150 meters, what you're going to do and how you're going to notify so people know what to expect. So, just very quickly, a little bit of process, just as a quick reminder where we are. So, the first reading has been held already with council. Today, we are at the public hearing. And the next step following this public hearing is the second reading of council, where you'll be able to either ask for edits, accept, reject, that sort of thing. One thing I did want to flag, which is a separate process, but is related to the changes being suggested today. So, one of the policies we just reviewed related to the public participation program triggers a change that's also needed within that policy guideline. So, if you do accept that policy language in the MPS, it's recommended that a motion is made at council to then make that change be reflected in the participation program documentation that you guys have as well. So, that'll be kind of a twofold piece. And just for sake of information, you guys will have, we drafted some recommended language that might be appropriate to make that motion. So, again, if that policy is accepted at the second reading, then something along the lines of that council direct the CAO to draft an amendment to council's G62 Public Participation Policy to bring the policy in line with the municipal planning strategy policy, IM1A. So, just flagging that as kind of a second component of this work. So, that's all I had. If there are any questions on those policies and any of those recommended changes.
All right, thank you very much, Alora, council. Do you have any questions with regards to anything that you've heard here this evening? Counsel, do you have any questions with regards to anything that you've heard here this evening?
Alora, I have one. It's now our duty to inform Kings County. So at what point do we inform them that we've adopted these changes to our NPS? Do we wait for the province to come back with approval or should we go out with a letter?
I think going out with a letter. Once you have made your determination following first reading, I think you can, I would be clear in that letter that it still has to go through the provincial review and acceptance so that they're aware, but I think giving them that heads-up would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel Gerard.
Thank you, Richard. Just a quick question. When we inform the county that we're changing something in our NPS, is there, do they have a say? Can they say, "We don't agree with that or it doesn't fit with ours"? Is there any way that the county can contest?
So they, I think what would be the hope is that they do articulate whether they support or disagree. You don't have to make a decision that aligns with what their recommendation is. That's just one piece of information that you consider. There might be one for further discussion following that, but it doesn't bind you to any situation. So if they disagree or have concerns, you still are able to make the decision you want. It's just a matter of correspondence and communication.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for our planner? All right, Alora, I will, we have one member of our community in the audience. Mr. Cousins, did you want to step to the mic? Did you have anything that you wanted to know about this change?
No, I don't think it affects me in big way, so I'll come on right there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Glad you're here tonight and enjoying the presentation from our planners. All right, if there is nothing further, I would adjourn this meeting and if we could have a motion to adjourn, please. Counsel Huntley, thank you. And for the second. Counsel Zabian, thank you. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried and the time is 5:15.